Ladies and gentlemen, it's five o'clock. We're now going to conduct our regular board meeting. Today is July 17th, 2025. Again, it's 5:00 PM. At this time, we stand for close reading. Attention, salute, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we remain standing, please. Gracious God, eternal Father, we come now once again to conduct the business at hand. We pray, God, for your discernment, your peace, and your power. We pray, God, that you just bless the school district, bless the leaders, the servant leaders that you have here. And we pray as we prepare for another school year that you would just guide us in the way which you would have us to go. We ask, God, that you bless all the staff, all the administrators, directors, all the teachers, and everyone that's associated and affiliated with Scottsboro City Schools. We pray that you bless the students as they prepare themselves and the teachers as they prepare themselves for another exciting year. Be with us now and keep us now is our prayer. And give us the wisdom and understanding that we need in times like these. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to add that we look at one or two items on the agenda.
Okay.
All right. Under Section Four, I believe it is. Actually, actually, on the agenda, it would be, it would be Section Five. But it will be Action Item A.
Okay.
Personnel. Items Eleven and Twelve. I spoke to your under regarding this. And, uh... Uh, you know, I'm gonna abstain from those actions. I would like to ask a question, though. And I don't know the conference. Probably Childers. The start dates for the individuals on Eleven and Twelve, is that because of where they're placed?
Uh, they, those would potentially be, rather than 187 day employees, that'd be 197. So that would impact the start date from everyone else's, uh, July 28th date.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
At this time, I will turn it over. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
For the agenda?
With the amended?
Yeah, well...
You have amended and closed his, um, desire to abstain?
To abstain from Eleven and Twelve?
Yes.
Any opposed? Most approved.
It's like whenever I read the personnel action out, he's already abstaining.
He's already abstaining?
Yes.
Right. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Childers.
Thank you. We begin with, um, Roman numeral Four, consent items. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve these consent items as follows. Board minutes, May 12th, 2025, May 14th, 2025, May 27th, 2025. Item D, the financial statement and bank reconciliation for May 2025. And Item E, fundraisers as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on the financial statements and bank reconciliation. And I, and I think, uh, Ms. Anderson did, uh, I said it right the first time. You did a great job. And I, I want to make sure that we're understanding that for June 5.27 in reserves and for CNP 1.75. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, for May, for the month of May.
For May.
Yes, sir.
And we are in what, thirty to forty-five days of arrears? So...
These are, these are calculated in a month in arrears. Yes, sir.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
All right. Roman numeral Five, action items. Action Item A is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the personnel agenda as attached.
Heard the superintendent's...
Again, I'm sorry. Again, this would include Dr. Spears', um...
Right.
Desire to abstain from the number two outline.
So I don't even want to take quizzes on these two.
Just make the recommendation to approve it as it was amended. And then, um, you've already approved his, um...
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second.
I'll second.
Uh, any more discussion? And Dr. Spears has abstained from the vote for number eleven and twelve. Uh, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item B is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 25-26 supplemental positions as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Mr. President and Ms. Childers, I'm sorry. I need to go back. I know we probably can't go back. But I want to understand that if we are, are looking at those items that I mentioned and there's three board members and only two board members, uh, um, vote, does that, does that still carry?
Your vote, um, as I understand, you abstained from Eleven and Twelve, but you did not abstain from the vote for the other numbers.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. That is, that is how my understanding was that you voted to amend the agenda.
So how do we, how do we address Eleven and Twelve?
That's what I was asking. Oh, God, I don't know how to do that.
Oh, I see. I see.
Before we get to four and...
Right. It takes three to approve those. So those two will not be approved at this time.
So maybe we'll come back up?
Potentially. Yes, sir. We ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Action Item C. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the purchase and installation of Mobile Communications America Digital Radios for Nelson Primary and Caldwell Elementary, New Wing and Jim at a cost of $244,779.70, paid with FY25 ATS supplemental funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would like to add that, um, as we heard from, um, the Mobile Communications representative, this is, these numbers are changing. And so, um, we need to go ahead and be able to purchase some of these things. But this number could come back in front of you if prices through tariffs and things like that change.
Because one of them already changed once.
Yes, sir. It did.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item D. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the fencing bid for Collins and Trammell Stadium from Fencing Unlimited of West Monroe LLC in the amount of $169,990, paid with FY25 advancement and technology funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Should we expect changes in tariffs on this as well?
I hope not. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All in favor to say aye?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's...
They checked out. We, uh, they were so low on their bid that it took us all by surprise. We had our architect really dig and check out. They're actually here in Scottsboro already. They've worked at the airport.
Okay.
Um, they have surplus of materials, uh, already. So they didn't have to price out and get out like other folks would. So pretty much, they own so much, that's what they do. They don't have to go subcontract and buy the trouble of those defenses. They have it. So they were able to come in, buy the bid under, they won out to the end. We, we were taken back by it. We talked to the architect about it and they fed them. Came back with their city report. So that's the worry on that.
Savins.
Yes, Savins.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item E. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Scottsboro City Schools salary schedule as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item F. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025 Scottsboro High School Quarterback Club Coaching Supplements as attached.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is once again solely on the, uh, Quarterback Club of the, of the, um, whatever group this is, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes. And typically, we say this a little bit later in the football season. But they're willing to go ahead and make sure that they have them out. So I know, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm certain that Ms. Dennis does, too.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item G. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Kings contract as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item H. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Club Wildcat contracts as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item I. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Nursing contracts as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
How many nurses do we have in our system?
So there is a, there is an RN, a registered nurse at four of our schools. And we have an LPN at one of our schools. And then we have two, um, nursing assistants to help with student needs.
Are they folders or are they assigned to...
No, they're assigned to, the two ex-referenced, assigned to individual students based on medical needs.
Will they folk with the students?
They will. Yes, sir.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item J. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Sunny Horizon contract as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item K. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Board Certified Behavior Analyst Contract as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is it just a kind of a blanket? It doesn't have a date?
Yes, sir. It is blanket. And you know, at the last board meeting, we approved the BCBA, but we do need another one, just in the event that we could not fulfill a needed service.
Should it go into effect after our approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What was the last, what's the...
It, it, the, the day and the month is not there. So I was just confirming that it'll go, it'll go into effect after...
Yes, sir. We'll actually put it in effect the, the first day of school. Yes, sir.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item L. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 25-26 Scottsboro City Schools employee handbook as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So I'm sure it was more than one set, two sets of items that, uh, did the entity...
Yes, sir. When it said the line, thankfully.
Two sets of items. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item N. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Scottsboro City Schools Student Code of Conduct as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Earlier this week, Mr. Hass gave us, uh, board members, um, discussion items packet. And on the very back of it, it had, uh, student laws and good standing. Is that included in the, uh, in this handbook as well?
That would be a question for Mr. Hass. I'm not sure I know exactly what he's referencing.
Well, I guess we...
We'll make a note of that in the last...
You want to, you want to just pause that one and we'll come back to it?
Yeah. That's item N.
Yes. All right. Action Item N. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the Board Policy 6.20, Revision of Wireless Communications Devices as Attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item O. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the Board Policy 4.09, Revision on Internet Safety and Use of Technology as Attached.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item P. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the Board Policy 3.17.2, Revision to Charge Meals as Attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item Q. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the CNP Surplus Equipment as Attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Feel it in there?
Yeah. I don't think it's on that one. It's on the rear. Not there.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item R. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the ACP Instructor and Lasting Professional Development at Scottsboro Junior High School and Scottsboro High School in the amount of $27,720, paid with Title II funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item S. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the purchase of the 2025-26 K5 I-ready curriculum in the amount of $55,465.50, paid with Title V and State Textbook Funds as attached.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did we, uh, save $5,000 from the, from this side? It's initially $60,000.
It's not, yes. I know that my son has worked directly with them. And there was a savings. I know she had, um, we were working to amend that budget. And, um, I know that they worked with us. I don't know if the savings was exactly $5,000, but it was close enough. It was definitely in that ballpark.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item T. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve this $39,800 ACP varsity tutoring program purchase, paid with Title V funds as attached.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item U. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 renewal of Parent Square Website and Communication Package in the amount of $19,075, paid with Advancement and Technology Funds as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item Z. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Microsoft License Renewal in the amount of $16,383.96, paid with Advancement and Technology Funds as attached.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
Action Item W. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the Schneider Path Services Invoice in the amount of $29,356.88 as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Would that amount be, uh, rebates or anything that was told to be given back sometime soon?
That's the, you know, the end of the year if we break even. Yeah, we're midway through. That's that is.
I believe that's the lowest rate that they will give us, sir.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
All right. We need to go back and revisit Action Item M. Um, this is in reference to the 25-26 Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Spears, would you mind asking that question again? I believe Mr. Hass is back in the room and possibly can answer.
In, uh, Item M, 25-26 school year for Scottsboro City Schools Student Code of Conduct, I was just inquiring, I know you mentioned to us in your packet the other day about the student laws of, uh, uh, loss of good standing. Is this loss of good standing included in this package?
No, no, sir. It's not in that one. Um, the good standing, you know, that we're looking at that is in the athletic handbook. Uh, because the question for the good standing, it, it, um, falls directly to the Good Standing Policy. So that'll be part of the information items in the next work sessions to be added to, again, our athletic handbook for this coming school.
So the athletics handbook is separate than the Student Code of Conduct?
Yes, sir. It falls only to add those that are participating in athletics.
Is that something we've been doing all along?
Or having an athletic handbook, it is. But we're adding the Good Standing Policy.
And anything that's contained inside that athletic handbook, Dr. Spears, it still centers around disciplinary action founded in the Student Code of Conduct.
And that would be on the next...
Yes, sir.
Work session.
Work session. Yes, sir.
I believe that got all the action items. I think we've got them all done. So, um... No? I'm sorry?
The superintendent's recommendation was the 2025-26...
You may re-ask it. I'll be delighted. It is the superintendent's recommendation to request the board to approve the 2025-26 Scottsboro City Schools Student Code of Conduct as attached.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approved.
All right. Uh, Roman numeral Six is information or discussion items. Um, A is the contract spreadsheet. This is an ongoing, um, list of any open contracts, as well as contracts that the board has approved. And then Item D would be the updated fundraiser list. And this would include all fundraisers that have been board-approved at this point. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about either of those. Any questions? Okay. Um, so at this time, if we don't mind, if there are principals or directors who have staff that's been approved tonight at the meeting, if you would take this time to introduce those staff, I would appreciate that, please.
If we have, if there was something on there that wasn't approved, it's kind of hard to know what was and what wasn't. So it's a little bit...
I got you.
So you're going to put us all in bad spot, isn't it?
I got you. Yep. You don't know what those numbers are. Okay. We'll just leave that alone. Okay. Okay, Ms. Williams?
Uh, next board work session will be July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, at five P.M., and board meeting, regular board meeting will be August seventh, twenty twenty-five, at five P.M., and, uh, before we adjourn, uh, I'd like to say, uh, thank you to Ms. Childers for everything you've done for us, uh, and I know wherever your feet land, you're gonna hit the ground running, so thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much, I've enjoyed the last nine years, the last four, um, as superintendent, have been one of the professional highlights of my career so far, and I appreciate the time being here, it's been a pleasure working with everyone, I appreciate the opportunity.
Mr. President, I'd like to concur with what you were saying, um, thank you, Ms. Childers, for your, uh, servant leadership role, uh, thank you for the great job that you've done.
Thank you.
In the last nine, four of those being as superintendent, so we, we certainly appreciate that. I'd like to also say, and, and we wish you well.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We'd like to also, I want to thank Mr. Hass for meeting with us this week and providing this, uh, board member discussion item packet, uh, it's very thorough, very, um, uh, comprehensive, and, and very colorful, so, uh, thank you for.
Yes, sir.
Those of us who need color to, uh, see what's where to go sometimes, but again, I'd like to thank our student system and our many, many staffers who, uh, make up, uh, one of the, uh, elite systems in Jackson County, how about that? All right. Thank you, Ms. Childers.
Thank you. It's a pleasure working with you, Mr. Dyke, it's been a pleasure working with everybody in the firm, and, and all of our faculty and staff who cannot be here, and I appreciate, um, just the gracious, um, the community's been so gracious to me over the past nine years, the last four in this position, um, I, I can't say enough great things, and it is true that once you're a Wildcat, you're always a Wildcat, and I will forever be one, and, um, again, I'm just very thankful for the opportunity to, uh, continue to serve, uh, public schools in the state of Alabama, I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I'm grateful for those of you who put your faith and trust in me every day, and, um, that